All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's city council meeting, June 23rd, 2020. This meeting is being recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meeting will be by roll call vote. If you are calling on a telephone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press for request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. Madam Clerk, do you have the next order of business, please?
So can you announce the counselors that are in attendance first?
Yes, yes, I will. Jamie's trying to call in too, so if we see him call in, we'll try to get him, we'll try to get him in.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get his phone number. So in attendance, we have Counselor Peck, we have Counselor McCarthy, we have Counselor Gilman, Counselor Cox, Counselor Holmgren, Counselor Memhard, and Counselor LeBlanc. And that is it. Counselor Nolan will not be joining us tonight. He had a hard day at work, he's overheated, and Jamie's gonna try to chime in shortly, so when Jamie chimes in, we'll let him on. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order of business is oral communications.
Thank you. So during the public, the public shall have every opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communication on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the mayor, office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within two weeks' period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Persons taking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each. The council president shall not allow any complaints as to individual performances. Can we mute everybody while we're on right now, please? Thank you. And was there anybody that would like to speak under oral communications? I see one. So let me see. Hello caller?
Hello?
Could we have your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Craig Hamilton. I reside at 46th Grove Street. And my complaint is, I've called several times, I guess, at this point now about Grove Street construction work to be done and sewer work to be done, which has not been addressed at all, as far as I can see on here on Grove Street. I've spoken with Jamie several times, he's been a real asset to me to help, help me along here. He's had a meeting with Sepaphia on some of the issues that we have, and I've not heard anything back from anybody regarding any of the roadwork. Our road is an absolute disaster over here, as long as, as well as the sidewalks. My mother's 78 years old, and, or 76 years, 75 years old, and she's, you know, she walks around the neighborhood here, as well as, as well as all the other elderly people, and it's really, it's really a hazard out there, it's really a physical hazard out there to elderly people or people even with disabilities to walk around our neighborhood. That's how bad the sidewalks are.
I got to Craig.
The road, yeah.
Go ahead, finish up, finish up.
Yeah, that's okay. The roads are absolutely so bad that now that all the landscaping trucks are going by with all their equipment in the bag, at five o'clock in the morning, six o'clock in the morning, at dinnertime, I happen to have one of those dogs that scare the fireworks, thunder, everything else, and every time one of those trucks goes by, it's like a bomb going off to her. It's just becoming a real nuisance to her and as well as, you know, my household too, and my neighbors. I've talked to all my neighbors, unfortunately, my neighbors aren't really public speakers, and, you know, have a hard time talking like this, you know?
Yeah.
I do have another couple of issues. The City of Gloucester showed up here about two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, to clean all the debris along the cemetery side of Grove Street, and they cut all the, all the stuff down, but they left it all. And unbeknownst to myself, my mother had emailed the GPW on Friday, and the GPW truck showed up here to begin, you know, cleaning up the debris that my mother had complained about. They weren't even here 45 minutes, they, they did a half a truckload right in front of the entrance across Macassus Street. Both, both city workers got back in the truck and they took off. They left everything from, from that point on, all the way down to Washington Street. It's an absolute disaster out there. There's debris, there's, there's trash, there's nip bottles, and it was just all kinds of stuff out there. I, I have, I've not, you know, these meetings that I have with you, with you people, and I thank you all for your service as well, is I never get a response back from the city on any, any of the, these meetings I've had. I mean, I know it's supposed to get something within two weeks, then I've, every, this is like the third or fourth time I've called in, and I've never gotten anything from the City of Gloucester regarding any of the issues here on Grove Street. And I do know that Shepherd Street was just paved and all the sidewalks were done on Shepherd Street, which, you know, and I'm not, not faulting any of the people that live down there, but most of those places down there are all rental properties down there. Everybody pretty much on Grove Street, I'd say 95% of us are all homeowners on Grove Street, which live here every day and not, not tenants that live in someone's house, you know what I mean? And it's just hard to go by and see all that work getting done over there. And as, as, as bad as my, my road is, it's just horrible over here. Absolutely horrible. And I don't know, you know, 18-wheelers, 18-wheelers are up and down the street all day long, shouldn't even be on the street at all.
Right. Okay, Craig, I will, I'll get something from, I'll get something from our DPW, so we'll get something from them, and I'll get right back to you as soon as they get it.
I really appreciate that. I just have one more thing I want to discuss, and that's the, my father's, my father's deceased now, but he was a retired Gloucester police officer, and I commend all the police officers today. But I do have some issues when I do call down the Gloucester Police Department regarding individuals in the cemetery, drug activity in the cemetery, it's just all, you know, people treat Oak Grove Cemetery like a stage four park, and it's really not. The dogs are just running around and, and defecating all over the place out there, people leaving the bags in there, that's regardless of, of the fact here. Two weeks ago tonight, I called, I called down there at nine o'clock at night about a suspicious car in the cemetery, and when I called down there, I asked the officer, "Do you guys have any cruisers in the cemetery?" Because sometimes they'll go in there and sit there for a while anyway, and they said, "No, we don't have any cruisers in the cemetery right now." And I said, "Well, I got a, I got a car that's in there with its headlights on, because it was nine o'clock, it was dark, and he's been in there for 35 or 40 minutes, at least", when I called. I have a police scanner, I happen to have a police scanner, nothing came across, and it wasn't a busy night that night, you know, if they were busy, I get it. It wasn't a busy night that night, and about 10 o'clock at night, that, that call came across, an hour later after I called, and sent two cruisers in there looking for a car that no longer existed. I mean, it was over an hour, which is basically an hour and a half that the car was in there prior to that call coming in. So, and that, that happens a lot, and I have a scan, I call, and I call, you know, with descriptions of people that are doing drug activity, drug deals out in front of my house, and they don't even get the descriptions when they call in.
Okay, Craig, I'm not.
You know, when they call it over the radio, any, any descriptions of the, nope, no, nothing provided. And I gave them everything, you know, what the guy was wearing or the girl was wearing, whatever it was.
All right, Craig, can you hear?
It's a constant problem over here, so I call down there quite a bit.
All right, Craig, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
All right, I'm gonna have to cut you off. I let you go over way past your three minutes.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, thank you so much.
No problem, bud. This, we'll get, I'll get some information on the cemetery too. I know it's private property, I don't know how much, how much we can do in there, but I'll get you something from that too. All right, bud?
I greatly appreciate it.
All right, pal, thanks for calling in.
Is this Steve?
This is Steve, yep.
Steve, thank you so much, I greatly appreciate it.
No problem, pal, I'll be in touch, thank you, Craig, I'll talk to you soon.
All right, you're welcome, thank you, Steve.
All right, bye-bye. All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak under oral communications? Going once, going twice, seeing none. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business is the presentation from the administration regarding beach parking and beach issues.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So Vanessa and I have talked a couple of times over the past few days on, so she's gonna give a quick update on things, and she will answer some counselor questions. So Vanessa, the floor is yours.
All right, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, good evening, counselors. For the record, Vanessa Kraszek, interim chief administrative officer for the City of Gloucester. On behalf of Mayor Romeo Taken, I'd like to provide you with a beach update. As you know, during Phase One, beginning on May 22nd through June 8th, as part of the reopening plan for the city's beaches and Stage Four Park, which were aligned with the reopening standards for coastal and inland beaches throughout Massachusetts, Good Harbor Beach was open to residents only with parking at a reduced capacity, and Winger Sheik was open to residents and a limited number of non-residents with parking at a reduced capacity. At that time, Stage Four Park was open to the public. Parking within city lots has been managed well within the reduced parking parameters in place. You know, signage has been placed and ongoing public relations effort continued to remind and educate beachgoers to set up at least 12 feet apart from other groups on their towels, limit groups to no more than 10 people, wear their face coverings when unable to maintain a physical distance from others except when swimming, and to carry in and carry out trash. Beginning on June 9th, Phase Two of the reopening began, and Good Harbor was expanded to residents and a limited number of non-residents. Winger Sheik and Stage Four Park were unchanged. Due to municipal office closures, beach parking stickers have been available online for mail-in processing. To date, we have accommodated residents by allowing the use of 2019 beach stickers or a motor vehicle registration and license showing a Gloucester address for entry until their 2020 sticker has been processed. This year, we discontinued non-resident beach parking stickers as well as the hotel voucher program in an effort to limit non-resident capacity at the beaches. And just as a point of reference, last year, 1,675 hotel vouchers were used. It's not the responsibility of city staff, lifeguards, or police to enforce social distancing or the wearing of masks and face coverings. These protocols are the personal responsibility for each of us to follow, and we've worked hard on signage and education materials to let people know that. Since opening the beaches for the season, we have collaborated with our municipal colleagues dealing with similar challenges, which have without a doubt exacerbated normal summer concerns. Since March, many people have been cooped up and are more than ready to get outside. We have seen a tremendous stretch of great weather, and specifically at Good Harbor Beach, we need to balance piping plover management and tide capacity concerns. Regarding beach parking enforcement, you know, our police department is out enforcing every single day. Since May 1st, they've issued 1,236 tickets, tickets in the beach district alone. This is a significant increase over past years. As a point of reference, last year, they issued 268 in the beach district. Our parking enforcement staff patrol a designated path throughout the entire city, so much like a boat, bus route, they hit the Good Harbor area several times a day. Patrol officers have a primary duty to respond to calls for service and conduct traffic enforcement. Non-public safety civic parking enforcement is a secondary responsibility. They have towed vehicles, but at times this is proven difficult because we rely on the availability of private tow companies. Our residents should not hesitate to dial 978-283-1212 to report a non-emergency issue. We have been in touch with management at Stop &amp; Shop in Shaw's to ask for, for their assistance and collaboration to ensure illegal beach parking is enforced and discouraged. This past weekend, Shaw's had 30 cars towed. The Beechland Avenue private parking lot is being monitored to ensure that they do not exceed capacity, comply with their COVID-19 safety plan, and capacity traffic does not impede fire access. We will continue to work on a coordinated approach with our Rockport neighbors on this private lot. There have been reports of increased parking on residential streets. We asked the council's help to put in requests to change any streets that should have parking prohibited, May 1st to September 15th, so that we can enforce it. As of this morning, all four plover chicks have hatched. As you all know, a significant portion of Good Harbor Beach is cordoned off for their excluder, exclusures, which has further put a strain on capacity issues at Good Harbor. Hold on one second. Oh, I'm having difficulties, excuse me. This past weekend, non-resident parking had reached capacity by 9:00 AM. A noon high tide further prompted the temporary closure for approximately two and a half hours of the footbridge at Good Harbor to all walk-on traffic. At that time, due, due to a perfect storm of circumstances, it was necessary to further limit access. The walk-on traffic has been a concern, but as seen in drone footage on some of the busiest days this summer, just past high tide, social distancing was well maintained. Internal meetings are ongoing to identify solutions that could help rectify some of the issues and concerns of our administration, and I'm sure you would agree. In the short term, we're, we're exploring hiring seasonal staff to communicate and educate the rules, and looking at how we can be reimbursed through coronavirus relief funds for these efforts. In the long term, meaning next season or beyond, we're exploring e-ticketing reservation systems for beach parking, which would help with parking issues and traffic. We will be convening a July 4th task force to plan for increased visitors, both at the beach and on the water, to ensure a plan is in place to handle the expected crowds. We will keep you updated on the progress of our own ongoing discussions and planning. Please know that we are working in earnest to address beach and beach parking concerns. Completely off topic, I wanted to give you a quick update about Main Street. You may have heard on the mayor's rave alert call the other day, that on Thursday, we will be cordoning off sections of Main Street to allow for alfresco dining to several establishments along that thoroughfare. I would just encourage you all to let's continue to eat and shop local. As you can see, I'm joined tonight by several city staff, and before we take any questions, I'd like to turn it over to our harbor master to give you a quick update from this past weekend.
Good evening, everybody. Everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Pretty much just piggyback off of what Vanessa said, incredibly busy weekend on the water. Spent a good portion of the day talking to some of my harbor master colleagues to the north of us in Essex, Ipswich, Newbury Port, Salisbury. Seems to be a similar trend of extreme boat traffic, and by any means necessary for people to get on the water. Went on a patrol early Saturday morning, there was already a group of kids coming out of Lobster Cove paddling rubber rafts over to Winger Sheik Beach. There's no weddings, there's no Red Sox games, there's none of this typical things that other people do on weekends. So anyone that's got a boat or something that floats is getting in the water. We've had an extreme, you know, stretch of weather, as Vanessa just spoke about, and it looks like that that's gonna continue right into what would be Fiesta Weekend here. So this weekend's already marked off in people's calendars, reservations we take for the inner harbor, moor and field, and so on and so forth, so I anticipate the same flow, if not more, leading right into the Fourth. Where, you know, I have every asset and every person that can get to work for me is out there, but unfortunately, you know, when you have a lot of boats, you have a lot of people, you inherently have some problems. We are working pretty closely with Chief Connolly and the police department for solutions and how we can work better together. Police boat's gonna be coming back online this week. I've already reached out to some environmental police contacts I have, they're gonna try to provide us with some additional assets. Their stretch incredibly thin, too. I'd also like to point out the role of the Coast Guard for everyone sitting here in the public. It's kind of a little bit of a misconception that they are out there to do our job with us. It's a little bit misleading. The Coast Guard is a federal law enforcement, search and rescue agency. They do not enforce city ordinances, they do not enforce state law. Under most circumstances, they enforce US Code, so federal laws. Once boats are anchored on sandbars or at beaches, that's the limit to their jurisdiction, for the most part, unless we specifically ask for assistance, and in some cases, they still can't assist. So it's left up to the harbor masters department and police department, and, you know, of course, and if we are fortunate enough to have an environmental police asset in the area. But this is the trend. I don't see it going anywhere, and it's, and it's not just Gloucester. So with that being said, we're doing everything we can to keep people safe, but I know counselors get calls of certain things happening in certain areas. If we get caught up with a boat that's overturned like we did this weekend, that's one patrol boat that was on, on scene on an outer lying body of water in Gloucester for four and a half hours. That means there's nobody in the river at that time. So it's a challenge, and we're doing the best we can, but that's, that's, you know, we're gonna continue to work through these problems with the police department and have a joint effort that me and Ed will continue to work on together in a partnership moving forward.
Thank you, TJ. Now what about boats anchored in the channel? That your jurisdiction is?
Yeah, no, I mean, if boats are anchored in an inevitable channel, we move them, the Coast Guard moves them, anybody moves them, it's not really a channel issue, it's, it's boats outside of the, you know, it's boats anchored up on, if there's a dry piece of land showing from the tide, then they're anchored up on it, you know, and people are on it, people are playing on it, people are partying on it. Tide comes in, people disperse, it's a mass exodus usually around sunset, that's when we try to focus most of our assets, you know, in tight, tighter areas like the river or around marinas. There's a, there's just a huge plethora of boats this year. I went online earlier on just like a Facebook marketplace, was looking for, looking through boat, boats and boat postings, and there's not even a lot for sale, and, you know, talking to some of the marina owners, and everything they have is sold, and I'm trying to get a 25 horsepower Suzuki Outboard for the Shellfish Constable come July 1st, and they're backordered, so there's a lot of people out there. And like I said, there's not a lot of other events, you know, Saturday night, Red Sox games, they're not a thing, but if you have a boat, you're gonna be out on it, especially when it's 80 degrees. So it's just an overload, it will pass eventually, but, you know, equipment, we have breakdowns, equipment is tired, staff gets, you know, beat up and tired, it's hot out there, but we'll keep going, but just know we're, we're doing the best we can, so.
Thank you.
TJ, thank you, but, you know, not to make light of the situation, but Counselor McCarthy has both police and boating experience, and he was looking for, to do some extra things on the water.
Me too. Give me a boat, I'm on, let's go. But TJ, you're absolutely right. I had this conversation with Counselor Gilman yesterday, you know, people have been holed up for three months, they're gonna get out and they're gonna let loose for a little while, it's gonna be the trend for a little bit. We're just gonna have to try to, try to do what we can. Counsel O'Hara? Jamie, you there? Okay, sorry, he had his hand up. All right, is there anybody else that has any questions? Counsel McCarthy?
Yeah, V, I just wanna say that I think that was great, what they did on Saturday with closing off the footbridge, because they're coming in droves from that side, I mean, the parking lot's fairly easy to control, but the existing neighborhoods that are around, and people are expanding those neighborhoods. I saw people coming from downtown walking to the beach, so I thought that was great that they were able to close that and leave the beach with some room for social distancing. So I encourage that we, if able to do it, continue that on these big hot weekends, and I think what, I forget who said it, but looking forward towards next year, I think, you know, that we can work on a lot of this stuff. This wasn't a good year to work on it because we couldn't have civilian input, and we couldn't have neighborhood meetings and things like that, so hopefully by next year, we'll be able to do that, but I just wanted to applaud that, that closure and that foresight of limiting the amount of people on the beach so that it was safe.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, and that was, that was all the mayor, Counsel McCarthy, so, you know, the mayor made that happen based on, like I said, a perfect storm of circumstances, and there was really no other option at that point than to close it down for a few hours.
Counsel O'Hara?
Thank you. I, I thank everyone for participating and, and helping during this crisis. A restaurant owner approached me this weekend, as far as, very thankful that the governor has relaxed to some extent, and, but the restaurant owner is extremely concerned that the governor obviously has employed social distancing, masks and what have you. Cut and dry, I'll get to the chase, there are restaurants that aren't following the protocol or the requirements that the governor has invoked, and this restaurant owner is concerned that there could be a spike due to just lack of social distancing, whether it's on the beach, on the water, on the boulevard, in the quarries, wherever them, wherever it could be. If there's a spike, the governor could enforce, in place again, take away, shut down restaurants, go back to what we were just a month or so ago. And, you know, this restaurant owner says if that happens, he's, he's out of business. So it's, it's something that, you know, you have to look at the flip side. Everyone, you know, has been cooped up, but, you know, we, we have to follow the six-foot spacing, wearing masks, we have to ask for city managers to ask their employees to, to enforce these. I, I heard Vanessa say, no one can enforce it, well, plain and simple, if people aren't told to do it, particularly in 80-degree weather, 90-degree weather, they won't do it, as, as was seen at Good Harbor Beach. So it's, it's very, very difficult for me to say, but I think we need to ask, ask the mayor's office, to ask the managers, for the managers to direct their employees to do enforcement. They're paid, I, I don't know what else to say. This is a very serious issue, obviously hundreds and thousands of people have died over COVID-19, and we can't afford to have any spikes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Counsel Memhard?
I just had a follow-up question. Thank you all for the presentation, it's very helpful and very timely. I'm not sure this is for Vanessa or Chief Connolly, but I just wanted to follow up on behalf of a number of residents here in East Gloucester concerning the opening of resident parking on Farrington Avenue to provide access to the beach aisles, and I don't know if that's in the cards at this point or not due to crowded conditions, but I just like some clarification about that.
Um, as of right now, as we're, as of right now, as we're still in Phase Two, it's on our radar, and, and we'll, we'll evaluate as we get closer to Phase Three, which we expect around July 6th. So let us see how the next couple of weeks go, and, and if we make a determination to open that up, we will let you know, counselor.
Thank you. Counsel Cox?
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and going over your protocols and what's been done and what you are hopefully going to continue to do. Counsel O'Hara, I take umbrage with your comment that they get paid. Employees are not there to enforce social distancing. I absolutely disagree with putting them in a volatile situation, and that is something for the police to handle, or Board of Health, but not a lifeguard, not a parking attendant, not, not somebody like that. They're, they're not trained to handle conflict, they're trained to handle money exchange and saving people's lives, and for us to request them, to put them in harm's way, you're gonna see a decline in staffing, and I just really find it, it's inappropriate for any of us to suggest that employees enforce social distancing. If there's a restaurant that is complaining, or if there's been a complaint, then you should report it immediately to the Board of Health and follow that protocol that we have in place. I'm all for reporting violations, I've reported some regarding packaging and stuff like that since restaurants were serving takeout. If I get the complaints, it's my job to forward them onto the Board of Health or the enforcing department, but I certainly sincerely hope that the administration does not put our employees in harm's way. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Holmgren?
I agree with Counselor Cox, this has been an incredibly volatile and emotional three months for everybody. There are people who- There are people who do not want to wear masks. There are people who cannot wear masks. Uh, and maybe it would be worth it, uh, for, um, city administration to send us some sort of protocol again, um, just to give us a reminder, uh, so that once again, we can share it with our constituents. Uh, there is still a lot of confusion around what to do. There are lots of rumors. There is a lot of hearsay. Uh, but, um, I, we have a Board of Health for a reason, but they are incredibly uh, o- overworked as it is. And it, I mean, honestly, uh, in terms of going out in public, uh, it, unfortunately, um, you know, I, and I, this is something that we apply in our own family. We do it at our own risk. Um, and, uh, there is a reason why, uh, there was a shelter in place order for so long. Uh, there is a reason why we are doing this in phases. Massachusetts has done an incredible job with keeping transmission the lowest in the country, but, um, I mean, there is really only so much any of us can do and that includes our very, very diligently working but overworked municipal employees.
Thank you, Counselors. Is there anybody else? Counselor Phil Gilman.
So just to piggyback on this conversation, um, two of my five restaurants, I don't have a lot in Ward Four, um, but two of my five restaurants have had issues of, um, customers not wishing to wear a mask, um, or having words about having a mask. And, um, I found Max Schenck and Karen Carroll to be very informative. They've both provided, um, primarily Max, but he always copies Karen, um, on how, how the issues have to be resolved. And it's just very, very informative. So I think if that type of information can be shared with the rest of the counselors, then when our business owners um, ask us questions, we'll be informed and it's really easy. I've created um, an email distribution for my five general managers of my busi- of my restaurants and send this information as it comes out. Fear it. And I think that that's really helpful because it's, it's tense. And today we had one of our, I won't say which place, but one of our five locations had a very, very tense situation that occurred and it's just, times are really difficult. So, um, you know, Council O'Hara, I do think we have to be very careful with getting, um, members of staff involved with this type of, um, of tense emotional matters and make sure that, you know, we have them escalate to the Board of Health for better understanding. I think that's the best way that we can do. Um, so that's, that's one comment I had. Um, the second thing I just wanted to mention was, uh, a question to TJ. I'm gonna, I'm going to extend the conversation a tad on the beach stuff, um, but I did want to mention that I saw the Harbor Masters team going right up and down the river, um, going up to boats and, and really working hard. And I saw it at the peak, four o'clock on Saturday. So, um, you know, shout out to you and your team. Um, you know, I think the assistance and anything that we can do when we see, um, the, the actual river, um, you know, the, the passing section of the river congested is certainly something that, you know, if we can get the Coast Guard to help you out, um, you know, I, I don't know what all the jurisdiction is, but that just seems like, um, something that we have to be really concerned with. And, and that's just a comment and maybe you can, um, elaborate. And then my, my second question to you is just, um, selfishly, I'd just like to reflect for a moment on Lanes Cove and see if, um, your team has followed through with getting some of the no parking, um, horses out there to protect the traffic from not blocking the landing. Um, you know, where the fishermen bring their, their bait and offload, um, their catch, which is the dock and then the, um, the public boat ramp and also the, where the, um, the kayaks, um, are, um, housed and the two racks, just so it, because being a state landing, we have to have that access. And I know that you were working on it last week. I was just thought I'd take the opportunity to see how that has progressed, particularly with the big, important, busy, crazier weekends than we've already had coming up soon.
So your first, I'll address it in a row here. The Coast Guard, yeah, yeah, they help out for sure. And I have a great relationship with them for obvious reasons. But, um, their area of responsibility, just so for everybody, Station Gloucester is area of responsibility is almost to the hot line and is far north as about mid Ipswich. So there technically, I know they have three boats down there, but they're a one boat station. Um, on the weekends, they do have two crews. But, um, that's a huge area of responsibility. There was a boat buyer in Salem Harbor which took Station Boston, which overlapped Gloucester and Gloucester assets pretty much the entire day Saturday. So there's a lot of water out there and there's a lot of people and there's just not a lot of law enforcement. Unfortunately, that's just the truth of it. Generally speaking, we don't have a lot of crime out there, but you do have a lot of incidences. So you know, more boats, more boats, more people to help out. We don't have them. Um, as far, but we're working on how to maximize city assets. So, um, that is in the works. The no parking, I actually went down there the other morning, grabbed a coffee at the Cove Cafe and put a barrel out for temporary no parking, which lasted, I think, six hours down there before somebody threw it in the bushes. I have signs being made. I've been in, in talks with Seaside Graphics, uh, or CC, yes, Seaside Graphics. They usually make some signs for us. They made all my COVID-19 related, uh, signs for all the boat ramps that are everywhere. Um, we're going to get some signage down there. If it lasts, it lasts. Everybody loves signs. I like signs too. Signs are all only good if people reading the signs obey of what the sign says or do not uh, dismantle the signs or vandalize the signs. We've had two sets of signs up at Stone Pier. It doesn't last a weekend and they're vandalized, they're graffitied. It's a problem. Having eyes on the place is a much better solution, but unfortunately we don't have all the people to do that all the time. It's a manpower issue, but, um, we have some signs coming. We'll see if they last. I hate to keep making signs for places that just get destroyed. It's a waste of money and it's a waste of time. And that's the unfortunate truth about it, but we're here to talk about the issues. So I'm going to bring them up. We're, uh, we're working on that. I gotta get signs for Corliss Landing too. It's a problem. Actually, it's a problem. The kayak racks being blocked in are a problem at every single spot that we have. Uh, Magnolia, they're also very popular, so we want to keep going with them. There's a waitlist on every single one. They're all full. It's a nice revenue stream for the department. We put all the money right back into the waterways or right back into, um, public access. So we want to keep going with it and we, you know, it's, it's always a balance of cars and parking and neighborhoods and we try to be very accommodating to everybody. But unfortunately, we, we, we cannot please everyone, but, um, we'll continue to do so. Signs are coming. We'll see if they last. It's like the long, uh, and the short of it.
Thank you, TJ.
Thank you, TJ. Um, hold on one second. Um, Council, Council of Pat. I'm just going to get to everybody who hasn't spoken once around and then circle back for anybody else.
Yes, very quickly again, just wanted to thank the administration for, uh, all their efforts. Uh, especially this last weekend as things have gotten really busy. Uh, the mayor's office, uh, has responded instantly with the support of the police department and the, uh, the Harbor Master, et cetera, and DPW. And then I'd also like to give a shout out to those that are there 24/7 in the fire department. Uh, I see not only, uh, Phil here and, uh, John is here and I'm not sure, uh, but on a Zoom meeting, Jonathan, you don't need to have a, uh, your mask on. But thank you all.
I think he's working, Barry. Uh, is there any other council that hasn't spoken yet?
Say again.
All right. Co- any, any, has anybody not want to say something that hasn't spoken? Um, Counselor O'Hara.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify. Counselor Cox, I said the mayor can ask their managers to have employees. I didn't direct anybody. I go through the mayor's office just to be clarif- clarified as far as Zoom, so the mayor's office can, can address the issue with the managers, their department. So I just want to clarify that. This is a very serious issue. As everyone knows, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. Many constituents have, have, have contacted me with concerns with the fact that social distancing is not happening, masks are not being worn. My job is to speak for my constituents. Just want to clarify that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Vanessa.
Um, just to piggyback on that, you know, we are still in the midst of a public health emergency and, um, you will see drilled in every communication that comes out of the mayor's office, you know, that there are things people still need to do. You know, you should wear a face mask when out in public and unable to social distance. Wash your hands. Stay home if you're sick. So we will, we will continue to drill that public education campaign um, so that we can all continue to do our part so there's not another surge come the fall. Um, but, you know, we are still in an emergency and, and we will make sure that we get that message out repeatedly. You will see it everywhere.
Thank you, Vanessa. Is there anybody else that would like to say anything?
Yes, um, first of all, I wanted to thank my staff. This is a mayor taken. I get calls every morning with Jamie. We go over the beach, we go over parking, we go over what's going on at restaurants. Just so people know, sometimes the presentation, how you're looking at something makes it look different than what it really is. So let me explain something to you. If you sit at a restaurant, the tables are six feet. When a person sits down, whether you're big or small depends, you know, and I want to put myself so no one gets insulted. Well, I'm a big girl. So if I'm sitting at a table, I could be right on top of another person behind me, but the tables are still six feet. If you look at someone, they'll say they're not social distancing. Also, I have allergy induced asthma. If I totally wanted to, I can say to someone, put me in the corner by myself or whatever, I cannot wear a mask. So you know what? Some of the restaurants he called, we have checked, Board of Health goes around, like we said, we say it all the time and we get ridiculed. Okay, is it six feet or, or do you have to wear a mask? You know, we know how it is. And believe, please, we are not policing people. And I said it before, we are aware that it's a COVID. But the fact is, all the restaurant owners know that what they need to do, because can I tell you something? They are more concerned than us, than the person goes in, because they do not want to shut down and never open up again. Because if that ever happens, they will not be there. And they absolutely, that's why they, but we want to do outside correctly. That's why we want to do everything perfectly. So we don't, because I know a lot of people are saying, we're not fast enough, we're not complying, we're not doing that. Things, if you want them done right and properly, so we could train, educate and make sure that it's done. Because we want to make sure that, don't forget, we understand that the restaurants have lost a lot and may never gain and met, some may not come back. So having the retails and the merchants. So my team, leading with Jill and Sal have been down there like you wouldn't believe. Some of the other communities that everyone likes to say, well, look at this one, this one, have now had a return back, take away some of the parking because the merchant says they lost business. So you know what? We had meetings today. We've been meetings, we've been working, we've been hearing you. Uh, and the fact is sometimes I, um, I've been looking at some pictures and I'm going like, I can't ever, ever go to that beach. Look, they're on top of one another. But then you look at a different angle and then you look at Mike sent us some drone pictures that, you know, was taking. And if you look at some of the drone pictures, you're going, well, there's still room. So I know that it looks like, well, you know what? They said it. And I talked today to the Lieutenant Governor and we, on every Tuesday, one of the mayor's meetings, and they said one thing, remember this. The beach actually is when the kids are playing, you're splashing in the water is the lowest risk place. If you do have your own gatherings in your own yard, they said, it's not the water or the pool because it's with chlorine. It's that people are intoxicated and they forget and they want to sit on top of each other. That's what happens. Or you forget that you drink out of someone's glass. That's when it's spreading. So half of the restaurants don't even want to go inside. Half of the restaurants don't want to come out at all. They just rather wait and they're going to do the curbside. And some of them are using different utensils, different things. They're all working on their pace, but let me tell you something. The Board of Health has gone, they went, they looked, the same thing with the hair salons. You look at some hair salons and they look like they're going to go into the emergency room and operate. And some just look like what they are, the protocols. It depends what it is, but they are following guidelines. We get the calls, we go. And can I tell you something? We don't need police when it comes to that because everyone else is policing it for us because we get more phone calls and all you councils are getting the phone calls. So I understand and I appreciate relating that message to us. We tell, yes, we are just aware as they are and we are just concerned because nobody wants us to come back. So again, I want to thank my staff and I want to thank all of you for your cooperation. And Jamie, thanks for the phone calls. Every morning I look forward to them. Thank you for you and Val. Val will bring up some news next time. Okay, Val.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, is there anybody else? All right. With that being said, um, this is, uh, not normal for us. We're all experiencing something that we have never experienced in our lifetime, lifetimes and probably won't. Um, people are home a lot more. They don't have places to go. We're slowly opening up. Um, we're getting a lot of complaints about noise. We're getting a lot of complaints about speeding. We're getting a lot of complaints about, um, just in general, um, because this is not normal. So we, we have to cope with the best we can. Um, you know, and I'm, I'm sure Mike and Ed and Eric and, uh, you know, the mayor's office is that, that they're dealing with top priorities first. Um, and, you know, and everybody wants to be top of the list for their complaint or whatnot. Um, and we're dealing them with them, you know, as they come in as, as, as important first and then going down the list. So we have to, um, reach out to our constituents, let them know this, that we're doing the best. There is no blueprint to this. Um, we are doing the best we can, even the city council. You know, this, this isn't normal for us to, to, I mean, look at us working right now. This isn't how it should be. So we have to try to do the best we can and make the best of what we have and try to get everybody on board. Um, the social distancing, I saw Craig Kimberly. We all know who Craig is. He did a fantastic job with that drone video flying over Good Harbor Beach. And, you know, you get a, a picture from the footbridge and it looks like it's elbow to elbow. And then Craig's video, um, I was impressed. I sent him a text message. I'm like, that is really, really cool, bud. And, you know, kudos to those beachgoers for taking the responsibility, but it starts with you and it starts with me taking care of myself and you guys taking care of each yourselves. And then that's what we have to worry about. So, um, thank you, Vanessa. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Eric. Everybody that's involved in all this, we appreciate what you guys do. Um, if we have anything else, we'll send you an email. Um, please, if we have anything for any of the department heads, let's go through Vanessa before we get up, reach out to them. So at least she's in the loop of what we're doing. Um, you know, we got to get Vanessa in the, into the groove of things, seeing that she's, uh, our top dog now. We've got to make sure that, uh, you know, she's, uh, she's in the loop before we reach out to anybody. So, um, with that being said, thank you, everybody for the questions and let's just
Praise it.
Let's just keep this conversation going. Go ahead, Barry.
Excuse me. Uh, yeah, just, I, I wanted to just reach out, uh, while we have them on to, uh, uh, Jonathan Sanger and Phil Hyerby, uh, to see if they had anything, um, to ask, you know, they're, they're, they're at this 24/7, um, since day one and, um, I didn't, while they're here, I just would like to be able to hear if there's anything, you know, that we can do to help or, um, help them spread whatever word uh, on their behalf.
All right. Before we do that, we got the chief, Eric, Eric Smith, our fire chief first. So maybe we hand it over to him first if he wants to say anything.
Yeah, good evening, Counselors. Chief Smith. Uh, yeah, so from our perspective, I mean, we're, you know, we're, we're watching the data as, as you are and we're watching the, the caseload that public health is, is keeping under, uh, you know, under their watch for folks that are in isolation, that are, have active cases or are almost gone completely. Uh, and we've had, you know, unfortunately, a number of deaths and, and many people sick. Uh, but the numbers have not been as bad as they could have been. So the, the efforts from, from the governor on down within the state to, to flatten the curve were very successful, um, from what we are seeing. From the fire department's perspective, I mean, a lot of these issues that come up, um, again, this is, this is a personal responsibility issue. Uh, I don't think that you can govern and set rules and parameters. Um, you know, we're not supposed to speed, but, you know, look at, look at Ed's recent data. He's got plenty of tickets to speeding. So you can, you can put all the rules in place you want. If people choose not to follow them, uh, they're not going to follow them. And the masks and everything else, um, you know, you, you listen to all the literature that's And the masks and everything else, um, you know, you you listen to all the literature that's out there and and people are, they're getting tired of of the situation, you know, both physically and mentally. Um, and so there, there's, there's a lot of people that are acting out uh in in different ways. And part of it may be to disregard the mask and and when they're out in public. But hopefully they're, they're gonna at least heed to the six foot distancing. So uh, it's not, it's not an easy thing to gauge. I think when I've gone into stores and places that are indoors, not outdoors, but indoors, uh, there is, there's pretty good compliance. I've, I've literally in the last two weeks, I've only seen one person who walked into a store without a mask. And then when they realized they had it off, they they quickly ran back out to their car and got it. So um, you know, it was a mistake. But yeah, I I think, I think spend a lot of time making a lot of rules that uh we don't have the personnel or the ability to really enforce well uh and make that change um is kind of spinning your wheels. So I I wouldn't, I wouldn't push for anything further than than what's coming down from the governor's office and the things that we have put in place uh with these phases. I think that it's on track, it's on point. I think it's very effective and there are always going to be folks that do not comply. And that just, that's the nature of the beast. When you see them coming your way, then then you step away from them and give you yourself that six feet uh to keep yourself safe and healthy. And uh, they can go about their business doing whatever it is they do. But uh, from our perspective, I think we're, we're in a good place, both departmentally. I think the city's done a great job, so I wouldn't push for anything further.
Thank you, Chief. Um, we do have Jonathan and Phil on. Would it be okay if they spoke out or is um, it's it's totally your call?
Yeah, if they, if they have anything to say, they can jump right on in there. They're, they're probably not chomping at the bit to do so, but to get on to to the business at hand. But uh, yeah, I I don't have a problem with it.
Uh, I give you guys an opportunity.
I just want to, I just want to say to Barry, uh, that I have a mask on because we're not, we're in the same office. So that's why I'm wearing a mask. I didn't mean to throw Phil under the bus, but uh, I also just wanted to say thank you to all of you for your support. Uh, I'm stepping, sorry, I'm stepping down. Uh, Phil's taking over and uh, it's been a great two years. Um, just going back online, I'm not going here, I'll be here to help him out. But I just want to say thank you for all your support over the last couple of years. Uh, much appreciated.
All right, Jonathan, thank you. Awesome, we appreciate it. Phil, how's it going, bud? Did you, did you get the number of the bus that ran you over or what?
I'm used to it. I'm used to it.
Uh, is it, would you like to say anything or uh, you don't have to if you don't need to. That's fine.
Oh, there's really not really nothing to add. They are, I think um guidance through City Hall and our health department's been excellent. There's really um, really not a lot we can add from here.
Yeah. Okay, we appreciate it. All right, everybody, um, basically comes down to what I said. I need to take care of myself. You guys need to take care of you. That's where it starts and then uh, we'll have everybody else take care of themselves. So, all right, awesome. Thank you for the update, everybody. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vanessa. Thank you, staff, everybody. We appreciate it. TJ, thank you. Um, all right, um, Madam Clerk, can I have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
Uh, are there any counselors that would like to pull any item off the consent agenda? Counselor Gilman.
Thank you, Counselor. I'd like to uh remove communications invitations. Item one, city council vote of August 22nd, 2017 regarding um Cove, what does that stand for? Council?
Certificate of Vote.
Order, oh, council order vote. Okay, thank you.
Certificate of Vote.
I haven't seen that before. So council order of vote 2017 166 regarding GZO section 5.30.1, a purpose regarding the sunset clause.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to pull any item off the consent agenda? None. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded. I'm going to call for the roll call. Uh, Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor Blank? Yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan was absent. Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Motion to accept, accept the consent agenda as amended, passes on a vote of eight in favor, one absent. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Can I? Counselor?
Yeah, Counselor Gilman.
Um, so I need to um, I need to move my, my matter with your permission.
We just, we just accepted it.
But I didn't, I didn't make them, I didn't make the motion.
Nope.
On it, so I read, so I
You don't, you don't have to.
No.
I didn't say what, I didn't say what we needed to do. I just removed it and then we approved the other one.
Okay, so
Okay, okay. So um, given that the notice to all butters in the city and this situation is impracticable, I move to waive the notice to a butters and set the public hearing for July 28th, 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor Blank? Yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan is absent. Counsel O'Hara? Jamie, you there?
Yes.
Counselor Pat? Barry?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one absent. All right, thank you, Counselor Gilman. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of June 18th.
Counselor Cox?
Good evening, everybody. Um, the first item on our agenda, um, let's see, Budget and Finance voted unanimously to approve the Gloucester Fire Department billing and collection policy as presented by the EMS Coordinator and approved by the mayor dated May 12th, 2020. And further to approve the proposed fee schedule attached to and incorporated into the policy effective July 1, 2020. And I so moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Um, the billing schedule was in the packet. So if anybody has any questions regarding it, uh, it's various fees that are charged by the ambulance service. So too many for me to go through with you tonight.
Yep, thank you, Counselor Cox. Uh, motion's been moved and seconded. Uh, Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes, sorry.
It's okay. Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor Blank? Yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan is absent. Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Motion passes, eight in favor, one absent. Counselor Cox?
Um, we have one more item. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council authorize the write-off of $520,625.06 in uncollectible outstanding ambulance billing. And I so moved.
Unfortunately, seconded, yes.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Um, there is, give me one second. Not yet find the email from Kenny, sorry. Um, so just as this is a matter of course of business that we've been doing for years, just putting it in perspective as far as the uh write-offs that we've had in the past. Uh, FY17 write-off was 582,000 plus. 18 was 515,000 plus. And then FY19 was 319,000, almost 320,000, but it was um only a portion of the year. So that's when we changed our our cycle from fiscal to calendar. So that is the reason for that. Um, and then obviously this year is 520,000 plus. Our revenues have um increased from last year, but it is a decrease from 18. So um, I believe that the report that we received from um John and Phil was that this is uncollectible, that they have worked hard. They have tried um various things with the agency that we employ to collect this, that um some of it's just not ever, ever going to be collectible. Um, and we all know the reasons why. So um, if anybody has anything further for John or Phil, I encourage you to direct your questions towards them.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any questions? Unfortunately, we do this every year. I hate voting this, but um, you know, it's something we do. Um, everybody understands what we're voting on. All right, uh, Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor Blank? Yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan is absent. Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Motion passes, eight in favor, one absent. Uh, is there anything else? Counselor Cox? Okay, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the Ordinance and Administration Standing Committee Report of June 15th.
Um, so I'm going to just throw this out there real quick. Um, we had Sarah, um, let me see what her last name is, Val, Valz, Valznek, um, come before us last week at O and A. We voted her up to counsel with the conditions that she got sign-offs from Concom and DPW. Um, I have emailed her several times um with some paperwork that she needed to fill out to get into Concom. I actually emailed her this morning again and emailed her again this afternoon to have her call me. I've still not heard back from her. Um, so I do not know if she has gotten her, her sign-offs. So um, we've had the GMGI do the same thing. We've had Eric Majors from Seaside Sustainability do the same thing. Um, I just don't feel comfortable voting her up without knowing that she she has the sign-offs. So is everybody okay continuing this to our next council meeting? All right, um, so I will make a motion to, oh, we could just continue this? Or do we have to all uh vote for this to go for, to continue this?
Um, no, if if you don't want to move forward on it, so you can do is it's going to continue the matter to July 14.
All right, yeah, because I I don't, I, I haven't heard back from her. I tried everything, tried to get in touch with her today. So um, so we're going to continue this to our next city council meeting and hopefully she gets back to us within the next week or so. Um, like I said, we make, we make everybody else do the same thing. So I don't feel comfortable um pushing this along, hoping that she gets her sign-offs because it just sets a bad precedence for us in the future. All right, so we'll continue this to our next council meeting. Uh, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Is the Plan and Development Standing Committee Report of June 17th?
Counselor Gilman?
No items to report.
All righty, um, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Is the first public hearing, public hearing 2020-019 to amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-176, penalties for parking violations subsection C in the Beach District by adding Hickory Street and Sawyer Avenue.
Right, I am going to open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor. We have uh one attendee right now. Uh, can we have your name, Lori? Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Lori Yor. I live at 11 Hickory Street, which is just up next to the Plum Cove School.
Go ahead, thank you.
And I would like to speak in favor of raising the ticket cost from the current cost to park on the street here is $15. And that is less than it would cost to park at the beaches. And I believe that it would be a benefit to raise the cost of the tickets to $75. This Hickory Street and Sawyer Ave are a short walk-through paths from the Plum Cove Beach. And we do not want to have people parking up here and going down to the beaches. And at $75, it's a big discouragement for them to to come and do that rather than $15, which is a bargain. So I would like to ask you to approve this motion.
Thank you, Lori. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor? Susan, can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Susan Dell. I live at 9 Hickory Street and I am in favor of raising the cost of tickets to $75. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Deborah, name and address for the record, please? Deborah, are you there? And then we'll give her a
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, we got you.
Hello?
Yep, name and address for the record, please.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay.
All right, Deborah, you got a, you got a really bad connection.
I do. I'm sorry, I'm going through a, I think I'm going through a dead zone.
All right, you, you, we can hear you right there, so we got you.
Okay, I I'm, I'm in favor of raising the fine.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. Um, we have, anybody else who'd like to speak in favor? We have uh Mary Ann. Mary Ann, can you hear me?
I can.
Name and address for the record, please.
Mary Ann Albert Boucher, 93 Month Liveson Avenue. I'm in favor of of doing that, but I just want to say if we do that on those streets, be aware that you need to do that at surrounding streets around other beaches as well throughout the city. Um, I, we also have huge problems here in East Gloucester as well um with uh roads and streets. Um, Niles Beach, Good Harbor Beach. And I, 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 I agree with the ladies that have just spoken. Um, we have a terrible problem in the city in regards to it. And if you're going to do it for them, then I think that we need to um be successful and do that throughout um the rest of the beach areas throughout the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary Ann. First of all, this started with a um, a few residents asking for this. So if there's any other residents in the city that would like to include their beach in a beach district that lives within the vicinity of a beach, we should, we wouldn't have a problem having them come in and we can do the same thing as we're doing for this. We did have a couple O and A meetings on this to um, before this got brought up to council. So um, but we completely understand. So we're, we're, we will happily entertain anybody else that would like to have their street in a beach district. So thank you, Mary Ann. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none. Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Um, Madam Clerk, are there any communications?
There are none.
Are there any Counselor questions? Counselor Pat?
Yes, um, I understand this is um gone before O and A, et cetera. And I just wanted to add for this and um for other actions, um, reference parking, et cetera. Uh, I bet I normally would like them all to go before the traffic commission. Uh, I understand that Traffic Commission has not been meeting um at this time. Uh, so I'm happy, you know, I will end up supporting this. But just as a general rule, uh, I'm in favor of um parking issues, et cetera, um going with the Traffic Commission.
Thank you, Counselor Pat. Is there any other Counselor questions? Seeing none. I want to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report. Uh, Ordinance and Administration voted three in favor, zero opposed to amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 21, 22-176, penalties for parking violations, subsection C in a beach district by adding Hickory Street in Sawyer Avenue. An ISO move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Counselor Gilman? Nope, you muted it down. Hold on before you start.
Thank you. So um, I was happy that this matter was thoroughly reviewed at O and A on two different occasions, on May 18th and again on June 1st. Um, it's in an important issue that was investigated through this process was the whole concept of nexus, which is the distance of the 24 through this process was the whole concept of Nexus, which is the distance of the 24 beach classification streets right now and how far they were to the neighboring beach. And that was very helpful. Plum Cove Beach was .3 miles, 3/10 of a mile from Sawyer Ave and Hickory Street, which was one of the closest distances other than in Ward 1, which would be Widham and Salt Island Road. And I appreciate, I just wanted to comment that I appreciated the time that ONA members spent visiting the streets, walking the path to the beach and the streets and talking to the neighbors in Lansville. So thank you all, and I hope that you join me in supporting this. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCarthy, and then Counselor Holmgren.
Yeah, just in clarification to one of the comments that got brought up, the East Gloucester already has a lot of beach districts, and we're not going up just on Hickory Street. Hickory Street is just being added to a beach district. The $75 ticket is in existence in East Gloucester, in the surrounding beaches, and all the streets that are in the beach district can be viewed under the city ordinance. Just in clarification, just so she knows that this isn't just those two streets that are gonna be $75, all the beach districts are, and they're being added to a beach district.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Holmgren.
I will be very happy to vote in favor of this. I want to thank Counselor Gilman. I want to thank ONA, and I want to thank the citizens who have come forward to ask us for help with this. And I really hope that it goes toward restoring some neighborhood stability and sanity and safety. I do want to clarify, will this take 30 days to go into effect as usual, or is it a little bit different because we're in the pandemic? Thank you.
Go, Counselor Gilman.
It's my understanding that it has to wait for that before it becomes effective.
Yes. Yes. Counselor Cox.
If we wanted to move it forward, we could vote on emergency measure, but I don't think that we are prepared to do that this evening. Just for future reference, it is possible to move things forward without waiting the 30 days, but the council has to agree to emergency measure.
Correct. Thank you, Counselor Cox. So anybody else that would like to speak? All right, seeing none. Just to summarize my, my, my experience with this, I felt the same way Mary Ann felt, that, you know, it may open up a can of worms with, with having beach districts pop up here and there. So I did my own site visit. I parked on Hickory Street, walked down. I got to talk to a couple residents, listened to their concerns. I walked down the path. The path was maybe 100 feet long, and then you're at the parking lot to Plum Cove. So basically, this is in the beach district. I thought it was a little bit further away, but this, you, you can't get any closer to a beach district without living on top of the beach. So I'm gonna support this fully this evening. I think this is a great way to utilize this tool that we have to prohibit parking in beach areas and find people. So that being said, is there anybody else? Does everybody understand what we're voting on? All right, it's been moved and seconded. Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Nolan is absent. Counselor O'Hara.
Yes.
Counselor Pat.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, one absent. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is Public Hearing 2020-020, Rezoning 2020-002, Temporary Amendment to the Gloucester Zoning Ordinance pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, and Gloucester Zoning Ordinance, Section 11.2 (Z) to amend the Gloucester Zoning Ordinance by adding a new Section 5.33, Temporary Zoning Relief to Businesses During COVID-19 Pandemic.
All righty, I'm gonna open the public hearing and continue this to July 14, 2020. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is Public Hearing 2020-009, Special City Council Permit 2020-001, Ringichi Road Number 105, MAP 261, Lot 31, Gloucester Zoning Ordinance, Section 3.1.6B, Building Heights in Excess of 35 Feet in the R20 Low Medium Density Residential District.
Thank you, Madam Clerks. I'm gonna open the public hearing and continue the public hearing until July 28, 2020. All right, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the City Council Discussion Regarding, City Council Order Number 2019-034, Parking at All Times of Motor Vehicles and RVs on Western Avenue from the County Landing, County Way Landing to the Avis, R. Murray Tennis Courts.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So this has been before ONA for several weeks. It has gone to Traffic Commission. Traffic asked that we prohibit RV parking on Western Avenue between the County Way and the bridge. We really can't do much on the other side of the bridge on the stage four park side because it is a public, it is a mass highway, so there's really not much restriction we can do. So this has come before, I'm sure it's come before all of us at some point in our times in our career as city counselors with parking and, and issues in general that happened down on the Boulevard. So I wanted to bring this up to council for a council discussion. I'm not asking us to solve all the problems tonight. I'm not even asking us to come up with all, all the answers this evening, but what I want to do is open the discussion up so we can find the right solution to figure out what we need to do down there, move it back to ONA. ONA will be able to vote on it and back, back up to council. I know the Boulevard is in Ward 3 and in Ward 5, but it's all of our, it's the cities, and I know, you know, Scott being over in East Gloucester, his residents use it. Barry Ward 2, his residents use it. All the at-large people and Sean's people, you know, so everybody uses this. So I thought collaboratively, we could come to a solution on this. I had Joanne send out the ordinances that were, have been attached to this over the years, and, I mean, that's pretty much everything down there. But I just wanted to open up council discussion before we move anything. So if anybody would like to chime in and start, Counselor Pat?
Yes, thank you, Council President, for bringing this to the entire council. And I've been following it, has, have been involved in this for a while now, and we did have constituents that were, had brought forth their concerns, et cetera. I think one of the things that was left out of the way this was put on the agenda was that, that the recommendations were to exclude special events. And I think that's an important part of this, because a lot of that, those parking restrictions make a heck of a lot of sense, but we may want to visit them in a different way on special event days. As far as the, the West Gloucester side of the bridge where the, the state DOT has control, I think it would be appropriate, probably this is a good time for us as a council, maybe to request of the administration to get in touch with Mass. DOT and see if we can actually have a, a study done that includes the whole area around 10 Circle. We not only have, once the road was changed to a, you know, one way and the other, in one direction, it caused some problems with traffic coming from Magnolia, wanting to turn up the, up Route 133, and there was discussion, there was a request from the Traffic Commission that we look, you know, ask the state if they would be willing to have a left turn lane there. And I think their basic response was, yeah, if you don't want to have your parking on the, on the water side from the tennis courts down. So I think the basic ordinance that is being proposed is, makes sense. I think we have to look at the whole ordinance, and I think we do need to appropriately look at the West Gloucester side to be able to have everyone enjoy whatever. And that would include somehow working with Mass. DOT to, you know, work together for, for a solution.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there anybody else? Counselor Cox?
I've received numerous complaints about RVs and such, and you and I have discussed this many times with some of the residents in the area. I think it's important that we listen to them. One of the biggest complaints that I get is from the special events days, that they take up twice as much parking as a car would be to be down there. They, they get there as soon as it's a viable timeframe. It's just, I think we need to actually look at the special event days as well, because people are taking flatbeds down there and RVs in there. It's not just the blue, the views that they're blocking, but they're there for a long period of time. I think there's more to be discussed than just limiting those types of cars, but maybe even possibly limiting the time that some of the cars are there. So, you know, it's circulation, all that good stuff. A lot of residents park on the non-water side of the road. So I, you know, it's not really an area that I'd want to limit time-wise, but, you know, the RVs and everything, they, they are problematic. It's hard to walk around down there with those. I've seen them parked right up against the crosswalk, too. So, you know, there's numerous things, but, you know, special events, I don't know that they necessarily should be excluded unless they are vehicles that are for or with the special event, such as the stage, that, you know, when, when rain goes down there, those kind of things are necessary. But, you know, to put a flatbed down there for the parade, it's just, you know, a bit...
Jerky. Jerky. All right. Is there anybody else? Is there anybody else that would like to chime in? Counselor McCarthy?
Yeah, I have to go along with Melissa. I think we have to look at each event. I don't, I don't think you can judge. I mean, like, the Harbors Parade is, is one event. The Fiesta is a six-day event that's on the Boulevard that vendors are leased out there. So, I mean, I think it just has to have a little bit more in-depth than to say they can't park there. And I kind of agree that, that maybe there should be a time limit, because you don't want to stop someone from stopping there in an RV that's traveling through town and taking a picture or something on that idea. You, they, they can't stay after midnight anyway under the ordinance, and they can't park there with more than three-quarter ton, and they can't park there overnight. And I mean, there's a lot of different ordinances that govern that section of the street. And I kind of agree with Barry that it should be looked at the other side of the bridge, too, because it should be consistent with both sides of the bridge.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there anybody else? Counselor Pat? Barry?
Yes, thank you. It was just, I just wanted to clarify, when I talked about special events, I was talking as what Counselor Cox was referring to, the, you know, the vendor-permitted vehicles would be exempt from the prohibitions. I was not talking about RVs in general or flatbeds or anything else. I'm just talking about for specific event days, whoever is in charge of the permit for vendor locations during that activity, to me, should be able to have whatever their vendor vehicles are there. But as far as, you know, RVs or trailers or anything else, that was not what I was referring to.
Thank you for the clarification. Joanne, so how, how long before a special permit for the Boulevard is in your hands, or before this, or before the Events Committee?
Before the Events Committee, on a normal year, they start in January. Any new event would have to become 60 days before the event. But they, they usually, yeah, they usually start in January, so, cuz they want to make sure their event is approved.
Okay, so it comes, say, so it's 60 days typically if they wanted to do something. So if they get a, a permit into you for a special event, how long before it goes to the Events Committee?
We meet once a month unless we have to have a special meeting, and it's always the first Thursday of the month.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a feel on, on, you know, what, what we need, cuz I know we have special permits come for us for certain things, and, you know, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into what you guys do, because I think you guys are qualified to, with all your department heads that are on there, without having city council intervention.
Well, I, I will tell you that all these special events have been canceled up until August 16.
Okay. All right, and, all right. So this is just some dialogue at this point to make sure that, you know, all of us are doing the right thing for the Boulevard. I know that it affects all of us, so I don't want just, you know, Sean and I put this order in, and I don't want the two of us to put together this ordinance and have it come up to council and then get that back down to ONA for tweaking and come back. So that's why this is here for a council discussion. So I want to continue this discussion for two weeks and maybe come up with a blueprint that I'll send out over the next two weeks. I'll, I'll review this video, and I'll, I'll view, review what we discussed, and I'll come up with a blueprint, and we can have a discussion on that blueprint at the next city council. Is everybody comfortable with that? Okay. But I want to include everybody. That's why I think, I think it's important for all of us to do this and not just ONA or a couple counselors or a couple residents down there, cuz I've reached out to just about everybody down there, or they've reached out to me, and some of them have really good ideas. Some of them are off the charts, and we will need to come up with something that works for everybody. So we're gonna continue this to the next city council meeting. Joanne? All righty. All right, so thank you, everybody. Appreciate the input. We have the next order of business, please. Joanne?
Sorry. The update on the Animal Advisory Committee by City Council Representative, Counselor Scott Memhard.
So Counselor Memhard, how's it going?
Going all right. The animals are wild.
Nice.
I believe you all should have received a written report that Alicia Penzerosa provided. They obviously haven't been meeting because of the pandemic, but most recently, the items on their agenda for discussion at Animal Advisory are the rodenticide and the killing of predators because of rat poison that gets into their system, trying to get more sturdy trash bags that aren't torn so easily, and also closed recycling bins that attract the seagulls and make a mess. They're working on a livestock ordinance, and they're continuing to work with the city on the piping plover protections. As Vanessa reported very optimistically, we do have four birds that hatched last night and this morning in one of the two nests, and this is a very, very vulnerable time for them at the beach. And we'll, you know, fingers crossed that they'll survive and flourish. So that's that. But they are still looking for two additional members for the Animal Advisory Committee. There are still two openings. So if people know of anyone who's interested in joining that group when we get back up and running, they would be welcome. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Memhard. So I should get my pipe and plover costume, and I can go sit on the other side of the fence and have pretty much the beach to myself, huh? I'm joking. That's great news for the, the plovers. I'm gonna call them plovers. Tomato, tomato.
Plovers.
Plovers.
Do that so I can come take pictures.
All righty. Thank you, Scott. We appreciate the update. And if any of our social media want to put it out on our Facebook page, that we are looking for two people for the Animal Advisory Committee, you might want to... that we are looking for two people for the Animal Advisory Committee, you might want to share that information. People might want to join. They don't know that there's an opening. So it'd be great to put it out there so people know that there are two openings.
A great committee. Thank you.
It is a really good committee. Thank you for serving, Scott. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the council's request to the mayor.
All right, so I'm going to start with Counselor Nemha, Counselor McCarthy, I'm sorry.
Having trouble there. Little technical difficulty. No, I, I don't have anything for a request. I, I am confident that the administration is doing everything they can with the increased traffic as we discussed earlier. And I'm hoping that they look into whatever measures they need, whether it be drawing a three-mile circle around our beaches to have emergency parking ordinances, whatever they need to do under the state of emergency, I would support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor O'Hara. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nemhard.
One item, just on behalf of some of my residents who've been reaching out to me to check on the status of the somewhat long-deferred paving of Harrison Avenue, which was dug up a number of years ago for a gas line installation job. And they felt that they were promised or assured that National Grid and the city would be coming back to repave Harrison Avenue. The trench has gotten somewhat settled and worse and they were concerned to make sure that they're on that list. I've talked with Mike Hale about it. Obviously, Chapter ninety funding is in limbo right now. We're very grateful for the paving and sidewalk work that the city just accomplished on Hart Street down below, which gets somewhat more traffic than Harrison Avenue because that's a side street. But I just wanted to put a request in on behalf of my residents to the mayor's office for a priority of repaving at the time that that's back on the, on the ticket for us all with the state funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Counselor Cox.
I submitted mine through email to the clerk's office earlier this week. Just for a couple examples, there was a couple handicapped spots that were reported to me that were no longer necessary. I can't, I copied Counselor Pat on the request because all of them are in port two. So as a courtesy, and I think we're in agreement on all of them. So all set.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pat.
Yes, I'd just like to reiterate my request to the administration that we look at working with Mass DOT about one twenty-eight and the Eastern Avenue intersection, the crosswalks. If the school project goes forward, it becomes much more important. It could take time to deal with that. And also the truck traffic issue there, even though it will impact the schools, it does impact the residents. And the Mass DOT is currently renumbering the highway statewide. And we have two signs that are on one twenty-eight in Gloucester that give incorrect information as it is. And I just would like to request that we work with DOT to get the correct information done as, as the renumbering is done so that we won't have some of the truck issues that we currently have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I, I got a good friend of mine, Counselor, I mean, a good friend of mine, Barry Pat, who's got some connections with the Mass DOT. I'll hook him up with you. Counselor, where are we? Counselor Holmgren.
I just want to congratulate everyone in the city and in the state because yesterday, the news came out that Massachusetts has the lowest COVID nineteen transmission rate in the country. So the virus has not changed, but because we have worked so hard to change our habits and our behaviors, we are kicking butt, basically. So don't stop being vigilant. Keep wearing your masks. Take care of each other. And I'm just, I'm so thrilled for us. I really am. We are a shining example in so many ways.
Thank you, Jen. Counselor Gilman.
Thank you, Counselor. I have a couple of quick things. I just wanted to update you all just briefly of some of the challenges that we've had up in the quarries because you'll be hearing more about it. But one of our biggest is a public health and safety issue of repeated fires and fire pits of recent smoldering until the morning when they're unattended. And that's a huge issue. And then the issue of litter and trash is just insurmountable right now with the volumes of people that we have. And Saturday, I did a walk-through with one of our Neighborhood Watch neighbors. And there's not only just so much litter, but, and I've taken pictures and sent it to city staff and some members of the, the Neighborhood Watch group in the, in the council. And it's pretty overwhelming, but the things that were most concerning is just the amount of feces, diapers, men's underwear, towels. So now the cleanup crews have an additional challenge of having to, to, there's just hygiene issues up there. So I'm working with administration and I just wanted to give you a heads up. And, and thank you so much for some of our neighbors who continue to go up there to clean and clean and clean. Damon Cummings for one, Frank and Janet Garrison for another. I, it's just, it's amazing. And it's just really brutal up there. So I'm passing around yellow bags and we're trying to get through it. But I just wanted to give you all a heads up. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, in looking at the new link that the mayor has sent that is planting a seed that City Hall might be ready to come back into some type of a halftime coverage for the public to be able to get in. I think the date was July sixth that was estimated. It's all subject to continued review. But I just wanted to, to just plant a seed to us because Counselor LeBlanc, maybe we need to start getting a better feel for when we might be able to get back as a council to some type of a modified setting. And the other thing that I just wanted to mention is a follow-up from a request that I had placed about Zoom and continuing that after the pandemic and the social distancing had ended. And one of my thoughts right now that might be worthy of pursuing is because Zoom was part of the COVID virus issue in terms of how we would be able to have open meetings and continue, that maybe continuing this for this year could be covered under the COVID virus relief fund. And that might be something interesting for us to look into because, you know, the cost of a membership is a hundred and sixty dollars for corporate membership a month. And to do a camera show like they do at the NSAT at the tech is about a thousand dollars for the equipment. And that's something that Joe Marino, who's the IT person at the tech, shared with, with us. So I'm just planting a seed because everyone that I talk to really thinks that there are great benefits of having standing committee and other committees like zoning board, planning board, et cetera, on Zoom. It's, it's a great tool for all of us who maybe don't, can't see in a, a meeting on the night that it's happening. But it's so helpful for us to look at it when it's convenient. And I think the public is feeling the same. So those are the things that I wanted to say. And I appreciate everybody working together on this council and the, the support and all the hard work of city staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll just echo you on our city staff and everybody doing what they do. So kudos to you guys. Vanessa, thank you for all you do for us. We're looking forward to everything you're going to do for us. So if there's anything you need, feel free to ask. So good job this week. We appreciate you. All right, with that being said, anything else before we entertain the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren.
Hi.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Nemhard.
Hi.
Counselor O'Hara.
Yes.
Counselor Pat.
Yes.
And Counselor Nolan is absent. Motion passes to adjourn. Eight in favor, one absent. Great job, everybody. Have a safe week and we'll see you soon. Thank you, everybody.